Hold on. Helicopter, whoop, 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 whoop.
We ready? All right. Okay. I think everybody's on. Thank you everybody for coming to our board meeting this morning. Today is March the 7th, nine o'clock. We will begin our board stewardship meeting with our Mr. Gray Slade doing our in-class.
Thank you. Let's pray. Lord, we have paused this time. We want to give you thanks in many ways that you have blessed us abundantly. Father, we know that we don't deserve to be blessed as you give to us. We thank and receive. We thank you for them and we receive them from your grace, Lord, and from your mercy. Father, we pray that you would give us wisdom this morning, that we would make decisions that are in keeping with your will, that these gentlemen would use the skills you give to them with to serve their fellow man, to serve the best interests of this county. Thank you, Lord, for their sacrifice and the sacrifices of their families to do what they do. Father, thank you for our first responders. I thank you that they are sacrificial in their service to their fellow man. Thank you, Lord, that you protect them, that you uphold them, Father. I pray that you would bring them home safely through this in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Okay. We have no public comment today. Glad to see Mr. Wells made it, though. First item is old business. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Morris. Second by Mr. Morrison, approved January 28th, February 12th. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Consent agenda?
Sub move.
Motion to approve consent agenda by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Ms. Ford Bear.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
The first item I have is to request to void 2012 tax receipt generated for property assessed to Green Hills Development. This is in the Stonebridge pit assessment as directed by the Secretary of State due to duplication of parcels submitted on annual report. All parcels previously matured to the state for the 2009 taxes pursuant to the Mississippi Code.
Make motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Discussion? Do you know where we are? I heard that was all supposed to be getting resolved now. Do you know anything about that?
Back, back when they, when this happened and our parcels certified, the pit people told Raymond in John's office to put a receipt out there for just the pit amount. Am I saying that right? And this is what we're voiding.
Okay. So is it going to be up for sale for long or somebody's going to be buying it or is it still?
I get the context of your question of the resolve, meaning that the properties
Available. Right, exactly, yeah, yeah.
That is completely and totally in the hands of Secretary of State. State Mississippi owns the majority of the parcels that are undeveloped out there now per the tax sales.
All right.
Our understanding is that there have been a number of inquiries about the availability of property of the Secretary of State to get all that handled.
Since they are the owner, is the pit still in place?
Here is a brief skinny on that.
John, I'm going to have to depend on which opinion.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we really don't know yet.
You got two AG's opinions that both seem to say the same thing, but you have a, the officials of State Mississippi who are giving instructions to our folks here locally that seems to suggest they don't believe that.
Okay.
So we don't know.
All right.
Can't that clear it up?
All right, Mr. Morrow, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The second one is a request to approve, to enter into an agreement with Diversified Companies LLC for processing, printing, postage, and mailing services for tag renewals at a cost of 33 cents each and authority for the president to sign a letter of authorization.
So motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
I have one more thing I'd like for you to add if you could. These came in late last week and it's some more voiding the tax sales that the Delta program threw back out there and we resold them after they'd already certified.
How many is it?
It's, you know, maybe.
So can I have a motion to add these four items to the agenda?
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrison. Add these items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Well, we can go ahead and approve them right now if you want to. Do you want to read them off to us or something?
I mean, can we combine them or have to separate them?
No, she's got them written all four together.
Please void the 2013 tax sales on PIN numbers 29022, 29021, 29020, and 29642.
Okay. Do I have a motion to avoid these?
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Miss Sow.
First item, I have made petition to change the assessment 2015 real and personal property assessments.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Item B, petition to adjust 2015 homestead exemption supplement rule.
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item C, authority to publish the homestead exemption deadline in the Rankin County news for the week of March 16th, 2016.
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I think we can do items D, E, and F, the same, basically the same thing on the Stonebridge pit.
All right.
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, combine these three and approve them.
Second.
By Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Herring. Lady here to save us some money.
Good morning.
Call for some, save us some. How you looking, I guess?
First item I have this morning is the bid opening for the safe room in the multipurpose arena fencing project.
Oh, yes.
Huh?
Oh. Well, I've been waiting on it. What?
The first bid received is from A1 Kendrick Fence Company. Total price for this project, $43,829.52.
Can I ask a question? Just because we weren't part of the board whenever they issued, I mean, there's some of us that weren't. Is this total fencing or is this?
Just the front.
Front, back, side?
This is just the front. The decorative one across the front.
Read that number again, 43. Okay.
I wonder what the 52 cents is.
Why aren't we doing just the front? I thought we were doing the whole thing.
No, this project is just the decorative front.
Right.
I thought we were doing it all at the same time, though. Okay. Yeah, ma'am.
I think we need to go ahead and do something on the front because of the building, the ditch right there.
Right, no doubt, yeah.
I agree.
No, I just, honestly, I thought we were doing it all in one big package and we were just going to break out the three sides.
It was discussed, I think, both ways over the last six months and this is what we ended up with. That'll be phase two at some point if you decide to proceed with this board does.
I guess the only reason that might be something to consider is it may get a better price doing it all than doing it in two phases. Same company got it that already be there.
It's a different type of fencing.
I know.
Yeah, it's a little late now.
That was your, I mean.
But my understanding was just the front, too, really.
That's what I, somebody I've been telling me last month that it was just the front.
That we were just paying for the front, but.
And the split sides.
Yeah, the split on the rest.
I thought this whole bid process was just for the front.
Anyway, we can approve to approve the, the three after this.
Okay, at this time, it is just that part.
Possible. But basically, as Sheriff said, we have to do the front now.
So it's clear, though, there was a memorialization of what the board's decision was with respect to Brandon's participation. That the memorial says that Brandon will be responsible for erecting the three sides and that the county will contribute not to exceed $35,000 toward that cost. And it will be an eight-foot hot wax dip.
Well, you got a great memory.
I remember recently.
Okay.
Provided to.
Okay.
I thought.
So no matter what.
Was going to go up to 35.
They're going to say whatever they got to cover the half the cost, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, Bridget, sorry.
Second bid received is from All Metro Fence Company. Total price, $59,685.
I didn't see a picture of this thing. I ain't seen it yet.
They draw in.
Yeah. You've just got to be here a little more, a few months.
This bid is from Calhoun Fence Company. Total cost, $46,988. The final bid is from Jeff Coat Fence. Total bid, $50,367.
Now, just so everybody understands, we took out the electronics out of it because there was a lot of discussions and we're going to come back afterwards, have another company come in and install that part of it. So I guess you want to take these under advisement?
Yes, please.
Okay, make a motion to take these under advisement.
When do we meet again, actually? How soon?
15th.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Morrison to take these under advisement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
My second item is renewal of a vending contract with Coombs Distributors.
I think he's the only one who wants to do it, y'all, so.
Sub move.
All right, motion by Mr. Morrison. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Yes, no terms changed on that, sorry. The third item is approval of a copier contract with Southern duplicating for the county prosecutor. It's three years at $204.16 a month and there was no change in price on that for the new machine.
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
My last two items can be taken together, D and E. It's authority to advertise bids for one or more backhoe for the unit system and then authority to advertise for bids for household hazardous waste collection.
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Westbrook.
I make a motion to approve what accomplished and scheduled March 16th. For the month, yeah.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Do you have anything you need to add, Dan? Okay.
Mr. Park.
Sorry, didn't want to mess up your opportunity.
Hi, Greg. So I want to go ahead and give the other three sites going at this current meeting. Not wait them forever. I just want to discuss it after the meeting, so. Sorry.
No problem. No problem. I won't take long.
Two, two items I have on the agenda. One is request approval of AT&amp;T utility permit to construct a, that's a copper, not a cooper, a copper utility along and across Monterey Road to be, to be installed between Butler Place and Highway 469.
I make motion approved as Cooper utility.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. The next item that I have on the agenda is MS 08314412B. That was our project on the old Highway 49 that we've been through with for at least two years, maybe longer. But we're just now, the process of closing it out. There were some problems on that project. We had a subcontractor just up against the state. A lot of things happened. But anyway, we have all the, all the test reports and paperwork.
Are we talking about 471 or 49?
471.
Okay.
Yes. And this is just the, the normal state aid form where we have to, or the board has to approve a board order and a joint letter of acceptance on the contract.
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Slade.
Good morning, gentlemen. Under my section, the first item is a public hearing on the Kendrick Gordon Conditional Use Permit 1449, Old Fannin Road, District 5. You will go, you will recall, we'll go ahead and open that public hearing. You'll recall that Mr. Gordon, through his attorney of record, indicated a desire to move the public hearing so that he, both he and his attorney could be present. There seemed to be receptivity to that when the, when the planning commission undertook that request. And so my understanding is that there is at least one individual who is here today to speak concerning this request. My thought is this, the hearing is open. We can allow that individual so that they don't have to return later to speak and give their comment on the matter. And then we will ask, we would ask the board to consider a continuance of the hearing at that point to honor Mr. Gordon's request. So if there's anyone here to speak either in favor of or in opposition to Mr. Kendrick Gordon's Conditional Use Permit 1449 Old Fannin, please come forward. Yes. If you will, please give your name and address and then you can address the board concerning this request.
Excuse me. My name is Matt Coulon. Address is 156 Cheryl's Lane, Brandon, 39047. Um, I'm, I'm not real sure on the specifics of this case, but I know in general, people want to do food trucks and I know it's kind of open the door for everything else. But I have a business, Mudbugs, off Old Fannin, then recently opened one right here across the street in downtown. And I'm opposed to it just for the fact that it puts all of us in brick and mortar kind of disadvantaged because you can only afford a certain area or a certain piece of real estate whenever you got to build and then all of a sudden it gives people the leisure to pack up shop, go to another prime location, do whatever, and just seems a little bit unfair side. Taxes, like property tax, you know, I pay X amount a year up there. I don't know how that would work. I know the property they set up on, you know, if they're just pulling up on a grassy lot, I don't see it as an approved property where they'd really be paying, you know, significant tax. That's about it. I mean, that's the two real highlights I see that I'm opposed to.
What's the name of your business again?
Mudbugs.
Okay.
So, like I said, big investment wherever I am, so I just hate to see people getting cheap and then I'm afraid it's going to open up Pandora's box and we got them everywhere and saturated, so.
Amen.
Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming up there. Thanks.
Renee, have you gotten kind of up to speed or kind of found out how the municipalities deal with food trucks and regulate and those kind of things? I know Brandon is getting ready to adopt something on food trucks. I don't know if Flowood has or.
How confident are you to incorporate that into the vision at the home?
I think Flowood disallows a period.
Disallows, totally disallows?
I checked. Ridgeland is doing a pilot-type program, but they're letting it go on public property into a park there in Ridgeland. And Oxford has a ordinance where they show specific areas where they would be allowed, you know, like specific zoning classifications.
Renee, make a motion. We continue the public hearing until Mr. Gordon is able to join us.
Yes, I believe that, that, have we got that date or are we going?
4/4.
I'm sorry.
April 4.
April 4. We'll continue the public hearing until April 4. I want to make sure that, it looks like Mr. Coulon's already exited here, so.
He won't be back.
Okay. If, if anyone is, and when we're doing this in public forums, if anyone has an interest in speaking concerning, either for or against concerning Mr. Gordon's request, they should be present on April the 4th at 9:00 a.m. Right here. Okay?
So we have a motion by Mr. Morrow to continue the public hearing until May, April the 4th. Got a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. President, item B is a public hearing on the countryside subdivision rezoning request. It's a District 2 property. The property owners in countryside subdivision are seeking to rezone the subdivision from RE1 to RE1 Reservoir Community District for inclusion in the reservoir community overlay district. The subdivision is comprised of 41 lots. A petition was signed by 26 property owners and it is, and it has been included with their application for rezoning. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in favor of the inclusion of countryside subdivision within the reservoir community overlay district. Is anyone here to speak in favor of it? Okay. This time, we will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the countryside subdivision rezoning request. Anyone?
Mr. Slade, I want to add one thing. I did receive one phone call on that as well, speaking in opposition of it. So I did receive one phone call from a homeowner out there, so just want to put that on the record, so that.
So the other homeowners that did not sign the petition, they just didn't care or they went at home or rather 15 or 16 people?
Judge Fairley's been running that. Judge Fairley lives in that neighborhood and I think he's been going door to door, actually, so.
So other than just that one is the only negative we've heard of?
That's the, that's the only call I've received was this one phone call, so.
Okay. I can't explain why it wasn't a unanimous participation, but.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, ma'am? No? Yes, ma'am.
We live there, but we hadn't signed up to speak.
Yeah, well, I. Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am. I just want to make sure we wasn't, pass you by.
Nice to. Not seeing any opposition, then we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I want to make a motion to accept it.
Sub move.
Motion by.
Second.
Cross, to include them to the overlay districts. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Aye.
Item C, under my section, is the public hearing on the Spencer Sykes Conditional Use Permit. This is on Stoll Road, District 2 property. Spencer Sykes of Sykes Enterprises is seeking a Conditional Use Permit to park heavy construction equipment on 2.30 acre parcel on Stoll Road, property zone C2. Equipment, equipment will be parked on the property when it is not being used on job sites. At present, they anticipate parking two, up to two dump trucks and a tractor from time to time. The parking area will be composed of fine slat. I'll ask if there's anyone here, we'll open the public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Spencer Sykes Conditional Use Permit. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. We'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
Make a motion, recommend.
Can Daniel, can I, this is very close to Daniel and I. And I went over there, I even talked to some of the landowners and there was no, the only opposition that I heard was, I don't mind them putting their equipment over there, but once y'all fix it.
Look, he's throwing it out there. Kind of strict the number where it won't just open up. I mean, I don't know if you want to do that or not. I just thought about that when he kind of listed two of this and one of these.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any kind of conditions you want to put on?
State, you got any thoughts on that?
Oh, I think it's a track, Renee.
Two and a half acres.
Yeah.
We have, we have Mr. Sykes present. If you guys want to talk about the specific conditions, he's here.
Morning.
Good morning. Spencer Sykes, 601 Helm Court, Brandon, 39047. We've got pictures to the show. We've got three different neighbors and all three of them, we got two copies here.
What you did?
You can, I've already, I've been out there.
I've seen all the, one we just took, it's got all the trucks, dump trucks and dumpsters and trailers and everything that's sitting on the brick.
This is your neighbors?
These are all three, the neighbors on one side. You come off of 471 and turn right onto Stoll, headed to 25. We're going to be the first one that will have a building. Well, it's empty right now, is what I'm saying. If we can get past, we'll have a building and there's another building that's got conditional use and then the other two.
I'm not missing that piece.
Two of the construction companies with eight hundred acres and drive vans and track those dump trucks, bulldozers, all sitting on those lots.
What, I think what the question was, was would.
That's right.
Would there be a number that we could agree that would be the maximum number of pieces of equipment on two acres or two and a half acres? I mean, I know it's hard for you to say for today, what, five years, but if, I think if we said. Eight or 10, and then you need to exceed that, you'd need to come back before us.
You talking about this home property or like if I have a little skid steer inside the building, nobody can see that, it doesn't have to be classified, does it?
No. I don't know that we, I don't know that if we drove by, we would be able to count that one.
Yeah. Well, we're not a big contractor and I've had that property, what?
He's had the property over a year.
Had, but first thing, oh, right.
And put anything.
Right. We, we're just, I'm just trying to get to where we do, what way I want to have it We, we're just, I'm just trying to get to where we do, what way I want to have it set up is when I build a building, all parking's going to be behind it. We're going to have a high fence with bushes, so we're not trying to make a sore eye for any of the neighbors or anything. We're not going to have anything but just a few trucks parked behind a building, you know, where we can leave, you know, we can storm and we know that our equipment's safe and there's not somebody stealing radios and fuel and everything out of it.
Is there a number that you would be comfortable saying today, a dozen? I mean, and.
Yeah, a dozen.
I mean, we've got, it's about two and a half acres out there and.
You say, oh, five, all right, twenty's good. I mean, I guess, what you'll let us do?
Well, you said there are other equipment. I didn't realize that there were, there are other, say, I got kind of lots out there and other equipment, so I did, I may have spoke out of turn because.
Well, now, the other side of the road is, I mean, it's broke up to be residential on the other side of Stoll Road, so we do have to be a little sensitive.
Yeah, and I think, I think your wording was good as far as in regards to landscaping and stuff like that. I mean, just as long as you're aware of that.
Oh, yeah, this is just our first step and then we're going to have actual pay to get the plans drawn, show you the metal building, the fence, the shrubs.
Brick.
The what?
Brick.
Oh, yes, sir. I mean, it's going to be a metal building with brick veneer.
Sure, I agree with that.
Yeah, we will be, we'll match the other ones that are out there.
Right, it's good.
Sure. We're not trying to be any, you know, any different or try to do anything crazy.
I was worried about it.
I, well, I have a motion by Mr. Cross to approve allowing them to use this.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Next item, item D is a public hearing for the adoption and implementation of the updated Rankin County Solid Waste Management Plan. We've got to open a hearing on that and so at this time I'll open that hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the proposed Rankin County Updated Solid Waste Management Plan? Anyone? We have gone through a comment period and one comment concerning the proposed Solid Waste Management Plan has been received by our consulting environmental engineer, Mr. James Hall. That comment will be received. The next step will be, not seeing any opposition, we will, we'll close that public hearing. We'll adopt the plan. The next step for you guys later will be the adoption of a formal resolution that will then be presented to the EQ for final approval of the plan itself. So now it would be time, appropriate to take action on the solid waste management plan.
Motion by Mr. Mar to approve. Second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Mr. President, the next five items E through I under my section are all to set public hearings on April 4, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. I would request that we take those together. The Roy Anderson Conditional Use Permit, the Dana Campbell Conditional Use Permit, the McIntosh Farms Rezoning Request, the Katie McKenon Conditional Use Permit, and the Clifton Rogers Conditional Use Permit. So move.
Motion combined E through I by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Mr. President, item J under my section is the consideration of and potential action to adopt a resolution in support of SB 2162. I want to add, put the little descriptor there, the airport bill. This is the one that really needs no introductions, Josh Harkins' bill concerning the modification to the JMAA Board Authority and the composition, the makeup of that board. That bill has passed the Senate. It's in the House, is my understanding. It's got to get a really good shot. So Mr. Harkins has requested that the Board consider a support resolution for SB 2162. That's what this would authorize. I got this late in the day Friday and so thankfully Ms. Janice was able to get it on the agenda and I do appreciate that. She accommodated me and Mr. Harkins. And so what we'll do is, if you are of a mind to do it, it will look very similar to the support resolution that you adopted on the Reservoir Community District expansion for the resort status. It'll look very similar to that. What I would propose to do is to draft that today after we complete our time here, get it pushed out to you guys so you can look at it, make sure you're okay. And if you're okay, then we can get the signatures on it at that point. So move.
Motion by Mr. Mar, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item K is discussion of potential action on the changes requested by Trustmark to our real estate contract. The changes that have been proposed and requested are very minimal. To get everybody up to speed, just a quick reminder, the Board has, had settled on, and Trustmark agreed to a purchase price of $150,000 for the 0.76 acres that lies immediately north of the current Trustmark Downtown Branch Facility. This is the piece of property that we need for the Chancery and Justice Court projects that we're working on. The real estate contract that I put together and sent off to Trustmark to review had a few additional terms that were requested by Trustmark in the negotiation process. So in addition to the purchase price, they asked for up to six parking spaces that would be made available for use by them. They're going to lose their employee parking that they have used that 0.76 acres for. And so they were looking for assistance from the county to provide up to six additional spaces for their use, for employee use. They also wanted access to the dumpster that they're going to lose on that site once we start construction activity. And so we discussed that, everything seemed to be, to work out okay. I put language in the contract that basically said the county would use its best efforts to provide up to the six spaces. I didn't want to lock us into any particular spot, but I just said it would be in close proximity to their downtown facility. Well, they didn't like the flexibility with that. So they have asked that we identify the six spaces and they would be immediately north of and on county property that's immediately north of the Rankin County News. So if you're right behind the Rankin County News building.
Yeah.
It drops off precipitously, there's a retaining wall, there is enough space right there to put at least six parking spaces. In our unprofessional opinion, we haven't addressed this to the engineer. I can hear him over there thinking, nobody's asked me about that. Ms. Laura and I looked at it and we think that we can get six spaces there.
Why don't they just discount the price of the square foot of those six spaces and they hold that deed and that way we don't have to maintain it for them and have these problems from now on.
Yes, we haven't identified that parcel, we'd have to have it all surveyed out to delineate just that part of, I guess we could do that.
Mr. Polk, might can do that for us.
Is that, were there any other changes that needed to be made?
No, that was the only one. That was the only change. And my thought was, we can certainly, it would be better that, that the county retain ownership of that little segment there, to be quite honest with you, Steve. My thought being that we don't know how long Trustmark might need that location, it might need those spaces, and if we retain it, then we can control that.
And if they moved, they would want to come to us, try to sell it to us.
Possibly could, although they wouldn't have to.
No.
So my thought was, let's continue to control and retain that section, make it available for their use as part of this transaction.
Just to make it clear, we cut out the dumpster.
Well, they will have, they were satisfied to have availability to any county dumpster, wherever it may be located. They were fine with that.
Got you.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
And now we'll be able to move on that transaction, get that done, get it off our plate.
Finally have it done.
Yes, thank you, Lord. Okay, I, an additional item, Mr. Bishop wanted to discuss the remainder, if you're willing to put back on here, discussion of the remainder of what we call the fence project of the multi-purpose pavilion. Would this be appropriate to go ahead and add it right here and talk about it?
If the Board's willing to do it, I'd like to go ahead and move forward. I talked to the mayor Friday and he said he's willing, the Brandon is going to pay their share.
I know that, but I mean, y'all, we'd like to make sure we talk before we do and that's our biggest problem. We always act and then we have to see now what.
We don't have the RFP done yet.
Okay.
So.
Because he mentioned something about a gate in the back there for a larger gate for, you know, as long as they're aware, getting ready to, I have no problem with it, you know. We're communicating with.
Aye.
I make the motion, we add it to the agenda.
Second.
Make a motion by Mr. Mar to add this to the agenda, second by Mr. Morrison, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Now, I need to move.
You'll make a motion to.
I make a motion, we approve it now. I want to see confusion.
Move forward.
Are we asking that we put together an RFP?
Right.
For the remaining three sides of this, is that okay? We're changing it up again.
I don't want Brandon to do it. I want to go and get it finished and get it done.
We're going to go back now to what you originally thought it was going to be.
But not, Brandon has agreed to pay after all, y'all.
So you, you want to talk, you're saying Brandon's not aware?
No, I didn't say that.
I just want to make sure they stay abreast of what, because the mayor made a comment, he wants some gates in the back potentially for some overflow parking either way. I just want us to communicate with him and make sure that we're getting everything that everybody wants on all three sides.
Initially said we couldn't use it for any overflow.
He wants it, he wants to have a gate back there in case there's overflow from concerts they have from whenever they install the amphitheater.
If we have overflowed, we go through those gates too?
Yes.
Was he initially?
That, that meeting we had, he said it works both ways. If we have an overflow for the horse show or whatever event there and it not being used, then we can go into their parking lot, you know, behind their facility.
I didn't know that.
I think, yeah, because that wasn't originally, that was not the case.
I don't want to add any complexity or confusion, but I do want to clarify one thing that this all arises out of Brandon's request for the acreage, which is immediately east of the multi-purpose facility, a 4.89 acre piece of property that they acquire possession of from the county in exchange for an understanding about this three-sided fence. And the understanding is as follows. Brandon believed that the cost of installing the three-sided fence, eight-foot hot wax dipped black chain link fence, was approximately $70,000. This is last year this time. That's how we arrived at the county participating in that project. It would be Brandon's project. The county's participation would be not to exceed $35,000, half of what Brandon estimated the cost to be. Those were all estimates, shooting in the dark, not really sure what it would be. Okay? So what is now being suggested and what the Board has just adopted is that the county will install a three-sided fence.
We haven't all adopted that, yet.
No, we haven't adopted it.
You're considering, you're considering it. My bad, you're right, thank you. I get ahead of myself sometimes, Steve. The county will undertake to install that fence. What we need to clarify is that Brandon is still on board, although the deal has been shifted and changed a little bit as to who would be responsible. We need to make sure and clarify that Brandon's still on board.
The reason why I wanted to go ahead, so we just get it done now, rather keep pushing it down, we go ahead, it takes long enough to get it advertised, everything put together and get the bids in.
But are we taking over calling the shots on what we agreed that they would do?
Yeah, Jay, we're flipping it.
What's it, what's it matter? We're doing it with the same fence, at the same cost.
If they agree, if they agree to the RFP, which Mr. Slade's going to provide them a copy of before we adopt the RFP, then they're good to go.
I can see if we do it and they're not at the table, this isn't what we wanted, this isn't the way I want it, this is not.
Well, and if it goes to 85,000.
Right.
What we have and what we can quote unquote enforce is that when Brandon installs the three sides, we will pay up to 35,000. If it takes 100,000 to build it, they get 35,000 from the county.
I'm good with that. If the, but if the county's running this show, we can't enforce that.
What we don't have.
I didn't think, I didn't think it read the county would pay 35. I thought Brandon's the one said they would pay 35,000.
I did too, but he said he just read.
I've got a document tied up, I'll forward that to him.
Win the decision.
This is what?
That says that the county's going to give 35, up to 35,000.
See, I thought it was, good, I'm glad you brought that up now, good.
What, what we don't have at present is the ability to determine timing. Okay, I think to Jay's point, Brandon may or may not be in a position to do that and it may be in relation to the other parts of their improvement project out there with the recreational facilities.
Well, had I realized we weren't doing all this at once, I wouldn't have done this one, this part, so.
Well, because this is all ours anyway.
Let Craig go to the mayor and just say, can we expedite getting, getting those things up? They may say, sure.
I have a question from Brian because he brought up about the front being post-secure. Brian, is it going to make us in a position we don't want to be in if we finish the front and it's, let's say it's six months down the road before they finish back? Is that going to put us in a bad situation?
No, I mean, I, I just want something to secure the front to let you know that not somebody driving around.
Right.
If you want to wait on it, I got, have plenty of cross ties and just lay a row of cross ties around and keep driving around to the other side.
But I mean, like, right now on the sides, is there an issue with people coming in? Like, if we had the front finished, is there an issue with people trying to, because there's really no amphitheater or anything else out there now?
No, I'm talking about somebody came in on the horse trailer the other night, drove around, dug up the grass and everything.
Yeah. Oh, you're just talking about for a short bit? You're not talking about.
No, now that they fit in the ditch, we're going to hook through something across the whole front.
No, I'm, no, I'm good with building a fence, we, we voted on that.
I'm saying, I could put cross ties around there and make a little barrier for right now, the outside, you want to wait and do it all at one time.
No, I want to go ahead and build the front. We just, we've done it.
Let's just, I just, I think we just need to send Mr. Slade to go see the mayor and say, hey, we want, we're very anxious to get it done. Can we get y'all on board to go ahead and get it done?
Jay and the mayor have such a good rapport.
Having lunch.
Okay.
So you need something from us?
Well, I think we have a motion and a second.
Well, we have a motion, second, but I think it's been changed. I don't think they want to do it, so we need to.
I really think, I think the mayor needs to be on board. On board, like, for now.
We need to rescind our motions and just let.
Well, we can decide this, I mean, I think he just needs to be on board. I really.
It's tabled at three sides until we have.
We can certainly come back on 15th. We got.
Dale, when I did all that work, you know, that approved piping and everything, you know, helped us, you know, all that.
Well, look, why don't we approve it? Why don't, okay, what if we approve it pending what the mayor says?
What Steve is saying though, and it makes sense, is if, I, I didn't realize that we were the ones that said we would only pay 35. If we take the lead, then we are on the hook to possibly pay more than 35.
Also, if we approve it pending them, okay, and going ahead with it now.
I think no matter what, you know, I'm just ready to get it done.
I agree with you, but I think I agree with what he says.
How about if we, we'll go ahead and have our conversations with the city?
Aye.
And then if we're prepared, we can take it up on the 15th with a formal determination.
I think we will be, and I think it's not going to be an issue.
No, 15th's only, we're only a week off.
Sheriff's going with me.
Okay.
Director? See you, Bob.
We decided to kick two board members out.
They tried to, they tried to kick you out.
Hey, we're about to have a.
We're going through our evaluation.
Yeah.
I knew Bob was going to get mad about that fence.
Okay, next item is, where are we? Laura?
Yes. First item I have is the approval of the Chancery Court Administrative Order and the Mississippi Supreme Court Determination of Need of Appointment of David El Moro Jr. as the Family Master in Chancery Court, and this is effective March 1, 2016 through June the 30th of 2016.
I have heartburn over, first, we're doing something.
So, I guess four or five days, surprised at how things get out, but anyway, I have. And also drew a question of, like, salary. Who determines, I tried to explain that, you know, the comeback is, well, what do we need you all for? If somebody else can come in and tell you who you're going to hire and who, how much you're going to pay them. Where do y'all, you as a board factor in?
I don't think I've seen anything new when judges writing orders and telling the Board what to do, I mean.
That was a point, point of their remark. That's the point of their remark and even set a salary and I don't know whether we still have a discretion or glory to what salary it is, but anyway, that's the thing I heard. And I, I just read, I have a question, and you, why do we, why is it on from March to June?
That's the state year. They could reappoint him, but the fiscal year, the state ends June and they have to reappoint him.
It will be, we will be facing this again, June.
Correct, basically the same thing, just reading, yeah.
At some point, we've got to face the, who, or like you say, we may as well not be meeting and just run this thing from court orders. And court orders are not law. Court orders are written for us to look at, you know, I mean, there's, we, there's, well, there's no need to go into that, but I think in this case, there is state statute that says this was already, we have budgeted and I don't think that we can go backwards, even though I would much rather had faced this a month ago before we were already into it and somebody on the job that has some ties to our Board, and I would like to have been able to ask that person to recuse himself from running for any office for a certain amount of time after this, where we don't give the appearance that we're doing what we're doing. We did it, y'all did it, for a Board of Supervisor, and I hold a judge's position at a higher level than the Board of Supervisors. So why can't we do that? I mean, I, I would say, and I hate to, because of the appearance, but I would say, I would go along with it if this person will sign a document that he will not run for a public office for one year after he leaves this, whatever, however the appointment is.
Not necessarily anybody, I guess maybe Chancery.
Chancery. I don't even want him running for dog catcher. I mean, I don't, I mean, the reason I'm saying that is I don't want to put somebody in a favor where it looks like we're picking winners.
Whenever we met with the judges last week, we brought that to their attention, that it's our policy that whenever there's been an open position, we've always pointed someone's not going to run. And we asked him, you know, to go along with that and they said that he had no intention of doing that, but that's different than him signing a document saying he's not, so. But we can still approve this, ask him to sign the document.
I guess that'd be, that'd be the same thing as saying.
Would that be just five before you just get him, ask him if he'd be willing to sign a document saying he's not going to run?
I would vote for, or if you ask me, would I be happy with it? No, but I would vote for. We're in a position, they've got us in a box because we're already on the job, and we're already two, I mean, the statute does not give us much room to say no.
Well, does it, does it not give us, this would be a, as for you, does it give us any flexibility on what the salary would be?
Well, let's talk about the different pieces of this. Number one, you're dealing with a Supreme Court order that has been entered where it has already been determined by, by the Supreme Court that there is a need for the family master. So that's there, and that triggers a component part of this Code section, the Appointment of the Family Master section under Section 95255 of the statute. Here's what it says. "The Chief Justice shall determine from the information provided by the Senior Chancellor if the need exists for the appointment of a family master. If the Chief Justice determines that the need exists, a family master shall be appointed." There is not, no discretion, once the Supreme Court has made its determination of the need, there's no discretion concerning the appointment. But there is a companion section, subsection four of that, that says, "Family masters in chancery shall be paid out of any available funds budgeted by the Board of Supervisors of the county in which they serve." What we know at this point, and Laura, you correct me if I'm off here. We had, prior to the previous election, we had a family master in place and therefore a budget that was associated with that position.
Well, Craig, explain though that that family master that was in place is in full-time employment now. We're not just replacing somebody that left and that's been open.
Yes, sir.
We're adding another one.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's, that's right. We went from two chancellors now to three full-time chancellors.
I thought that was going to help solve the problem anyway.
Right.
And that's what we were actually told up prior to that, that this, we probably wouldn't even need one once this third chancellor was elected.
And unfortunately, the statute, Jared, says that the person or persons who are asked about whether there's a need or not are the Supreme Court. They don't come to the Board of Supervisors and say, hey, do you think you need, we need another family master? They go to the Supreme Court because that's what the statute says.
Who tells us, Chief Justice didn't come down here and evaluate our record today?
Well, I, I don't know. He's provided information, according to the statute, he's provided information by the Senior Chancellor.
Okay, we provide, or our people provided him the information, so he's going with.
Comes out of our, comes out of our courts.
Yes, sir.
Let me add a little bit to this too. Number one, it is not an elected position, and I understand elected positions that you would require them to run as we did in a pass that I've done in supervisory. It's not an elected position. I think you're being a little bit off-base to think because somebody gets that position, they're going to run for it. It's a prerogative, I mean, if they want to.
No, no, that's why I said that he wouldn't run for a position.
A position, but anyway, my clarification here is it's not an elected position.
We, we understand that.
Secondly is, if I have the floor, the second one is, we had thirty-nine people in DHS the other day. We're already a year behind in our court cases that it is. The third chancellor is going to try to help us catch up. And believe me, the third chancellor's been working Fridays in, and he's working this week too. I mean, this spring break, a lot of them don't work, they go to conferences, stuff like that. He is working this week as well. The thirty-nine cases in one day he had last week, that's norm for us. That's above and beyond the court cases that we already have in the House. These are DHS cases.
Do they normally work Fridays, the ones that's there now?
Normally, we have Ex parte day on Fridays. That's when the attorneys get to come and visit with the judges one-on-one, discuss their cases they have coming up and things of that nature.
They don't hear cases on Friday.
Yeah, which is, which they're here, they don't hear cases, but they're, they're, all three of them are there to talk to the attorneys, and Mr. Slade knows this as well, to come in and talk to them about every situation they may have in regard to whatever case they may have come before the courts and all too, so. It, it, this is, the, the part that he does at a family master just, is, is just more work. I mean, it's more work on top of the things that we already got on the line to do, you know, with our schedule and all that kind of stuff. We're, but we're about a year behind right now on court cases. That's about a year behind. So the new judge is definitely going to help us catch up with that, if we ever catch up. Rankin County's growing. We're rapidly growing fast, and, and we get court cases every day. There are petitions filed every day. In regard to Mr. Mar, Mr. Morrison's remark about, does he work for me or Mr.? All attorneys work for me. Do I use, do attorneys work, help me do file petitions, help me do counties? Because I can't do that and all that. Mr. Mar does happen to have the knowledge and do that for me, yes, he does that. But I don't think that has a bearing on, I don't think that should have a bearing, even be, you know, on what, what that meaning means by saying, does he work for me? Really? I don't, I don't make these decisions. The judges make a selection of a family master at all.
The judge will tell you who to, who to use?
No, sir. They do not.
That's what you just, I thought, I'll clarify.
Judges say what?
I'm clarifying, I thought that's what you said. I don't make these decisions. The judges make the decision. And you were referring to, and it was in the sentence when you were talking about who works for me, so.
The judges don't make the decision who works for me.
Okay, alright.
That's make a clarification. That's not, that's not what it said.
Right.
The judges make the decision of who the family master is going to be by their selection. The senior judge makes that with the other two judges' input as well.
Thank you, sir.
Has nothing to do with me.
As a judge, will he, if he, well, I mean, obviously, he's already on the job. Will he continue to work for you?
He can. It's a part-time, the family master's a part-time job. He can.
Maybe, maybe he would choose not to.
Yeah, he might choose not to. The judge wrote.
Actually, if he's too busy, I'll, I'll use somebody else or whatever. But that has no bearing on what I do, so, I mean, y'all need to take that out of the.
With me, if there, I understand that this is not today, an open office that he's going to be running for an election, but to have this theory that there's not going to be another judgeship opened up in Rankin County is just asinine. We know that we're growing, we're nearly a hundred and fifty thousand, we're going to add, there's going to be judges in different courts, and for us to put some, and people are smart enough to know that an incumbent has much advantage. All I ask is if, from the time that he's appointed, or when his appointment is over, he will sign a document that says he will not run for a public official, a public office for a year. That's, that's all I'm asking, and I.
That's your prerogative. You can ask him that if you'd like to. I think it's, I think it's wrong in doing that, but, because it's not an elected position. But I think you're wrong in doing that, but that's just my opinion.
Well, it's consistent with what the board did.
It was obviously an advantage in the, in the most previous election, and we know that.
Well, I think he stated due to seventeen thousand people approved that appointment as well.
Right.
I don't know what the advantage is, guys. Y'all were talking about somebody that comes in and deals with the judge and making decisions to plead fifty percent of them and fifty-seven had, so I don't understand what they're doing.
Well, you're acting like there's only one person in the whole state that's eligible to do this.
Excuse me?
You're acting like there's only one person in the whole state that's eligible.
I didn't say that. I don't make that selection, Mr. Gaines. That's, I'm not making that selection. I didn't say there's one person.
There's one person that come in and handled fifty-seven. We've, I mean, I'm okay with this guy. Even though his brother's on the board, and even though he does work with, you know, other things, we, as long as we can show the public, we're not trying to pick winners. We're not, that we're being fair and consistent. When you say seventeen thousand people voted for this or that, I guarantee you, you go out there and advertise, do you want to put people in positions and allow them to run for elected official offices down the road? You'll have a lot more than seventeen thousand say no, because I, I mean, this is.
I think, I think number one, you just follow your attorney's advice here on the Board of Supervisors, and you just use your opinion and your heart to do whatever you think's the best thing to do.
The board should decide that, not the Chancery Clerk.
But I think you should also, who?
I think the board should decide if we follow our Craig's advice and not the Chancery Clerk giving us instructions on it.
I'm not, I just said I would honor that, I would.
No, you said, I think you should.
Well, I think you should.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, then we table this till we get all this worked out, and we'll bring it back up to fifteenth, and we'll, give us a chance to decide, or, or either that or approve it pending a signing of what you're asking, Mr. Gaines.
Okay.
So either, either way you want to do a motion, we can table it till later, till the fifteenth, or we can, my thought was, I'm just asking you.
I really don't think it's going to be an issue. I don't think they'll run it. So why don't we just approve it and ask him to sign the document and be done with it?
Well, to approve it, if you do that, you're going to approve it pending signing that. You can't approve it to ask. And also, is it set that we will pay that twenty-five hundred dollars?
Well, if I may, the budgeted amount, and Laura, you're going to have to help me with any numbers we need to talk about. The budgeted amount, I want to say, with fringes and everything, was going to push it up around thirty-two hundred a month.
Well, what fringe, I thought he.
This is, this is just the budget amount for the prior family master, not this position.
Okay, gotcha.
Right, it was fifteen hundred per pay period, which is twenty-six times a year, less fringes.
Less fringes.
Correct.
That was supposed to be in the neighborhood of thirty-two hundred a month total, okay?
That's including fringes.
Yes, sir. And what we understand from the chancellor.
This one is less.
Yes, ma'am. The chancellor's recommendation was to, to pay the new family master twenty-five hundred dollars per month and no fringe. So, there is enough, for the purposes of this discussion, there is enough in the budget for the family master position to cover the request that has been made. No additional monies.
I'm, I'm sure that was well researched before they came up with that figure.
Well, and if I may, I, I do want to clarify one thing because I think it's important to point this out. Mr. Mara's work for the Chancery Clerk has been as a private attorney. That's, that's important to point out. Where there could potentially be an ethical issue, I'm talking about the Ethics Commission ethical-type issue with respect to his occupying both family master and another position would only be in relationship to his having two public offices that he would hold at that point. So he would not have a state-level ethics problem to do both. I think it's important to point that out. I did have enough time to look at that. I can't speak to the issue of whether or not there is the potential for other kinds of ethical problems that could arise with him occupying a family master and doing private legal work, either for the Chancery Clerk or others. There, there will be legal lawyer-level ethics issues that have to be addressed, but that's, that's going to be Mr. Mara's issue to deal with or the individual litigants. I don't see a state-level ethical issue here.
I kind of doubt it. John McClure did it forever, didn't he? So.
There's just not an issue there. I think that's important to point out.
How many hours they work on Friday? You talk, they, they work, they're going, he's going to work, and let me clarify, it has nothing to do with being Bob's brother or anything. I think high respect for David. But, but I mean, really, how many hours will they work on Friday? That's the day they said he would work Friday. Is that a, to, is this, is this going to be like an all-day deal or three, four hours?
I think it could be, I think it could be, Jared. And, and that's because a number of DHS cases that would be packed on to that day for adjudication, I, I can see that being an all-day affair.
Well, is there.
The other judges have a bit of flexibility built into their schedule for ex parte, and I don't want to get big in the weeds, but you, hopefully, this will give you a better picture to how the Chancery Court operates. Friday's sort of been reserved historically as the day where non-confrontational matters can come before the court, where matters that involve maybe only one set of parties, like in a state proceeding, where there are no, there's no adverse parties. There's no reason for there to be court time because everything can be handled in the judge's chambers. That, that's where matters on Friday go, okay? And so it's, it's a lot less confrontational, a lot less pressure, a lot less time constraints. It's an effective day for the court to be able to move through what would otherwise really clog up their dockets. And so the attorneys have a good feel for how that system's supposed to work. They plan their schedules around it. It's an effective way to run the court, in my opinion. Monday through Thursday ends up being the big days on contested matters, divorces, matters involving things like annexations or that type of thing. So, you know, if the system operates and it works, what I think with our growth as a county, what we found is, is that the contested matters take a lot of time. And so it's helpful to have other individuals who can come alongside and take care of some of the smaller things.
Well? Gaines?
I'd make the motion that we approve it if he will sign a document that he will not run.
Well, that's, so that would be pending.
However you want to do it. Jay's the president.
Well, you know, and I think, I don't want to get into forcing him to, because if he doesn't, then we're, I think we're overstepping our bounds and we're going to be ended up in, you know, contempt of court over here.
Can I just add one thing about that particular issue to Jay's point? I do not believe that a document that he would sign indicating his agreement on the front end not to run for public office, any, any, any office, I don't believe that that's legally enforceable, but I do think that there could be merit.
His opponent would think so.
Thank you. And so to, to that point, I, I just want to make sure that no one is laboring under the misimpression that that's a legally enforcing or binding agreement that he made.
Craig, what I was talking about is us making it a, that it had to be part of his approval, forcing him to sign it.
Alright, let's just.
We have that authority to force him to do that.
And, and my point being that he could sign that document, and it would have not, there would be no legal, legally binding obligation.
Nor is it, nor is it when one, someone that we place to fulfill an expired term for, on whatever reason, unexpired term for whatever reason, is legally binding.
That's correct.
More or less a voluntary, but it, it is that, and he's usually on. Well, I'll make a motion, then let's just table it till the fifteenth.
Second. Yes. Thank you, Brian.
You're going to need somebody else, another.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to table it to the fifteenth. Any other discussion?
If that, that time, then you can, if that point in time, then you can talk.
We're prolonging work being done, you know, getting work pushed out, so.
Are you, what did you just say?
You know, that by us not acting on this, that's just putting it further down the road, more cases, you know.
You don't think, it's effective March first. This is already going on.
Right.
Been going on.
So it's not like it's backing up.
Yeah, okay. Alright, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Alright. Yes. Oh, yeah, and the, the Daniel Cross and, and Bob Mar were not in the room at the time, though.
We saw about other problems.
Alright, next item.
The next item I have is approval to accept the certificate of substantial completion from J H and H Architects Planners for the Rankin County Circuit Court modification. There will be a final bill to come on the fifteenth. This is just the substantial completion.
Alright.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mar. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
The next item is a request of approval to set the Rankin County Cleanup Week for April 18th through the April 23rd in conjunction with the Household Hazardous Waste and Entire Collection Day on Saturday, April the 23rd, and authority to advertise the notice of the Spring Cleanup Week and the Household Hazardous Waste and Entire Collection.
Alright, motion by Mr. Mar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
And I have one additional item to add, please.
Yes, ma'am.
This is amendment to the contract between Global Tel Link and Rankin County on the new FCC regulation on rates, charges, and fees and other requirements. This is for the inmate telephone service.
Motion by Ms., I have a motion to.
Motion to add it to the agenda?
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mar to approve, second by Ms. Cross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. There's a lot of skin in the game by a lot of others.
Yeah, this, this is the breakdown that everybody wanted to see, that basically covers the entire project, which is the realignment of Andrew Jackson Circle, the emergency access road from Laughlin Road up to Andrew Jackson Circle. Also, the south end of Andrew Jackson Circle, the rail crossing there being closed, and then the addition of signal gates and crossing improvements at Laughlin Road. Basically, the four participants outlined are Airgas, Rankin County, MDOT, and CN. And you can see at the bottom, the totals on the right side, that just is how much each, based on this estimate, how much everybody would participate. Basically, what we did on Andrew Jackson Circle realignment is, Airgas takes the majority of the construction. Rankin County has the asphalt, which was the discussions that the county would do, the overlay once the road was constructed. MDOT and CN would handle the crossing lights and gates and the crossing surface. On the emergency access road and the closure of the south end of Andrew Jackson Circle Crossing, the county would bear the cost for the relocation, I mean, of the, the installation of the emergency access, and CN would provide the removal of the existing crossing there at the south end of Andrew Jackson Circle. And the Laughlin Road crossing modifications, that would be entirely MDOT. And the Laughlin Road crossing modifications, that would be entirely MDOT. CN might have a little bit of that, but that really didn't concern us whether it was CN or MDOT, but that would be the addition of, of crossing gates and signals. And I've got, I brought copies again of the, probably should have handed these out first.
Picture's always held, man.
That's it is.
Yeah, that's probably helped a lot for you, starting with all of them numbers.
Well, we can, we can recap now. The, the yellow alignment on here is the Andrew Jackson Circle realignment. That's the one that is the majority. Airgas, I say majority, obviously MDOT has a, the, the largest part of it, but theirs is, is the crossing and the gates. But as far as the road construction, Airgas and the county, Airgas has a larger portion there.
They're going to close the one to the right.
Yeah, where, where the, the emergency access, which is the blue, the, on your page, the left end of that, which would be the, the northwest end, that, that's the end of Andrew Jackson Circle that CN is really wanting to close because it's a, it's a, it's a bad grade crossing, and that's the one they're anxious to.
Well, the last time this came up, there was some discussion about people not being willing to give up their property.
That's not the same going wrong yet.
Well, that's why we need a.
No, that's, that's.
Well, I'm sure, well, so he's getting to that, he'll show you, you can follow, yeah.
The, the, the blue, the area in blue is where there were property owner issues when we were, and, and remember when we originally proposed this?
Thank you.
When we originally proposed this, it was, it was going to be an open road. Andrew Jackson Circle was actually going to be realigned and come out on Laughlin Road. There was opposition from two of the three landowners there, and so we backed up and said, okay, we'll just put an emergency access at that end. It won't require as much right of way. The, the railroad's going to allow us to get right up against their, their right of way for that, and we just won't need near as much right of way.
Talking about a few feet.
Right, you said you were going to get with them, you thought you could maybe work out. We still got to make sure that, there was going to be some kind of emergency access also?
That, that's what the blue line is. The blue line is, is, is an emergency.
I know a couple of reasons why, but Daniel has some concern about lock, being on a gate, or not lock, or something, all those lines.
But it, this isn't, well, I mean, it'd be great if we could have built a whole, whole road, but that's not going to work out. I mean, that'd be the ideal and be what they really need, but if we don't do this emergency access, these people that live all in the red horseshoe here, that if something happens, they're completely blocked in for any type of way to get any emergency in that way, even to the Airgas plant is blocked in. So, you know, we met with CNN, I was, they were very accommodating to try to do what we could do to give us enough way to get an emergency access. Far as the amount of property we would have to have now, I don't see a problem with that at all. We only talk about feet, really, just a few feet to get in there.
So we, if all this comes together and works, the county would be on the hook for maintaining the emergency road access, making sure it stayed up to grade or.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
And you.
But it, go ahead.
And you discussed MDOT's participation with this number? They're good. Yes, sir, this, this was sent, we met on site with CN, and this exact sheet here was sent to MDOT, and they, they sent back it so they didn't see any problems with it, so.
This is a, yeah, I mean, opportunity, the only real opportunity I can see, get the crossing bars and get a, get an access for them.
Chair, this was like a small gravel area. It's not.
No, just.
The act, yeah, the access road would be 10 to 12 feet wide, 16 crushed stone, a little bit of gravel, and that, I think it's going to, it's going to require maybe one drainage pipe, not, nothing, the access, the emergency access is not a big deal at all, a little clear.
No, it's not, in fact, it's, yeah, CN, CN was really, was willing to, I guess, participate with property.
And the only other thing you'll see on the emergency access end is we have a, we've added a school bus turnaround at the end of Andrew Jackson Circle because it would become a dead end ultimately if that closure was taken out, so we would, we put the cost in there to construct a, a cul-de-sac for a school bus turnaround. What's next on the list as far as elements of project, Jerry, what we need to do? We need to, are you looking for action or that's the next meeting or?
Well, I would mind, I'd like to have, I look for, I'd like to have some action today, really, because if we do that, then that gives me something to really know we're going to do, and we, I can go, we can make sure we get this started. And I'll tell you another thing, it's important because Airgas is wanting to move on forward. I mean, they, this has been going on, really, working on this for about two years. Airgas representative, they, they wanting to know when we're going, we're always, when we're going to be ready to move, as he discussed in here the other day when he was with us.
And I'm not sure how that would work, and I'd kick the ball to, to Mr. Slade, but at some point, I think we need to get with Airgas, and they've been sent this, and Joe Miller, who was a gentleman that was here the last time we talked, discussed it, he was going to take it to his balls and be mindful that this is a construction estimate. Until we do survey work and design, we don't know that this is the actual cost. I feel good about the numbers, but I think we need at some point to work out some type of agreement with Airgas that their participation is whatever percentage.
But we need to at least let them know we're.
Right.
And I understand where you are, where they want, they need to know that we're sincere for them to keep moving on, and, you know, each one needs to know, and so I think we at least need to let them know that we've approved the concept.
They may need to pick out an engineer and do that work, too.
Sir?
I've got a good one in mind.
One resolution to do another resolution that basically says that we're in favor of this, that's, I don't know.
How, how do we need to do that, Mr. Slade?
I think at this point, the next step from an engineer's standpoint is going to be construction. Am I correct? So not all process would be to authorize your engineers to proceed with the construction plans for the, for what you see. In the meantime, we need Airgas to commit, I agree with him, to a percentage of overall cost of the project. Right now, they're in for roughly 15 to 20 percent. I'd like to keep them on the hook for up to a maximum amount of 20 percent of the total cost of the project. The county's in for about 20 percent. CN's biggest, well, D O T's the biggest in here, and so my thought would be put a "not to proceed" on and see how they like that.
CN.
"Not to proceed" aboard me in total contribution from Airgas.
Well, why don't we go ahead and get approval of, approve these numbers here, and as long as everyone agrees to pay their portion, then let's move forward with design and build the, build the road.
Well, that's what I was getting at, we, he just, he just needs to know that we're, 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 we're ready to move forward, I guess, along, working with them, with them to agree. We just need something from the board saying yes, so he knows that we, we've committed, provided they're, they're committed to everything that we're, what we're talking about.
My opinion on that would be if, if we're given authorization to proceed with design and that spread on the minutes, I, I think, I can't speak for Joe, but I think that would be a pretty good indication to him that the county's committed to their.
He just wants to know there's some commitment before he keeps, he goes, but in our discussions with him, once he realized the, the money that overall has been put in and everything, that he's, he was, well, he smiled, he was accommodating.
We feel pretty good about getting them to agree to a number that looks a lot like what you see on the statement.
Right.
Do you want to make a motion then to, to authorize?
Yeah, that's the way we need to go ahead and do it, and I think it would. I make a motion then to authorize Engineering Services to move on with the design and make contact for, with Airgas, Airgas representatives.
We'll, we'll paper it up there, we'll, we'll make sure that there's some room in there in the event we have some potential hiccups.
Okay.
We'll make sure that there's some room in there to account for what their portion of the hiccup would be.
All right, we have a motion to add this item to the agenda by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Marrow, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye.
Thank you.
Now we got it added to the agenda, now I make the motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve, second by Mr. Marrow. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. And opposed, ayes aye.
Okay, one more item.
Oh, yeah, discussion of county ambulance service. I didn't think we were going to do it since we didn't get the contract, but if anybody has something they want to talk about ambulance service.
I think we, I think we need to have some discussion about where we are, so they'll at least know where, where we are. I mean, they spent the whole, entire day in here with us, thirsty.
The proposed contract came early this morning.
Yeah.
So that's sort of where we are.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
Go right ahead.
Well, you've been involved in it more so than I, so.
Well, we all discussed and everybody put in what we wanted out of the contract. We don't know exactly what's in the contract, but the, Patford has agreed to put seven ambulances in our county at all times, and they've also have additional resources to bring forth if need be, and I think that number was 10 or 12 ambulances in case of emergency. I think that's right. Chief Wilber, am I speaking true?
Well, I mean, I know we were in on discussions, but I don't know if, that it was actually.
Well, that's the discussions, that's what was, that was the latest discussions we've had, and, you know.
It's too soon to know exactly how it's made into the document, but it's too soon.
We, we don't have the actual contract yet, but that's what's been discussed.
Yeah, I was going to say, but I don't think Brian said he does, has not seen it, Brian, but I haven't seen it.
Our attorney just said he just got it this morning.
None, none of us have.
None of us has had, but we wanted to know that there's been negotiation with, well, Patford has come forth and it has been negotiation with them to take over what we have, you know, obviously Pearl and Brandon are, are out, but they already have Pearl and Brandon. There's been a talk with Flowood, and they've offered a, we feel like a pretty good deal. You know, our, we hadn't decided, anyway, looking at that, it looks like it'd be one of the better deals for us, best for the county, but there, like you said, there's a lot of things, once you, in the contract, that have to be ironed out, and we understand that, but at least we're at that point where we feel like we're getting closer to be able to negotiate something with them. I, I'd like your all's input on what you think about where you think we ought to go out.
I think Mr. Martin has something he'd like to say.
Good morning, and thank you guys for approaching this. Obviously, ambulances have been a concern for quite a number of years, and I think we're on a path that's positive. I would just like to ask the board, or remind the board, there were a couple of work groups put together and it's pretty good input. I have no idea what's in the contract, obviously you guys don't either, but it's time for negotiation, but I'd like to stay on those timelines and response times, and respectfully put that you probably ought to add additional district or two, because otherwise, the 15 percents for a countywide system, you're going to find some areas that are routinely 15 percent. And that's the one thing I would caution you about as we go forward, as you guys go forward through the contract negotiations.
Well, honestly, I need, you know, I appreciate you all's input up to this point, and I thought it was very valuable, and I, I personally would like to see continued input from you all because you're the ones that are going to be there. And, you know, I'm concerned likewise with the response time in the southern, as well as I know, the northern part of the rural community, and I want to make sure that's covered. I think the district, the district part that we talked about once was like a five district, then it went to two, but there's a little more than to the two than it sounds like in two, and Brian can explain that, if you don't already, hadn't already heard that part. So, but I, my concern is that we don't wind up in something like we did before where they average it out.
Right, exactly.
So that, that is.
In our last discussion with them, the numbers that we had, they felt comfortable in being able to meet their timelines out in the rural areas.
Even, and I'm asking a question, and probably more to Daniel, because I think it was you that explained this to me, even in the most rural areas, under the two stage or three or whatever, the 15 percent, we are still protected with a time of maybe 30 minutes.
Yeah, see, before the way it was, it was.
It was just wide open.
It would all average, it would all average together, and, and you couldn't get an accurate number. But once they met their number, it didn't really matter.
Right, after the 20 percent that we stayed in and there was nothing.
Anything, anything that we look at now won't have those options.
Yeah.
The, the parameters will be set that the outside areas are held just as accountable for as the inside areas.
I understand, and it's just, it becomes a number game.
Sure does, and it, it's all wording in the contract, absolutely. And like I said, we.
You have 30,000.
That's right.
In the Rensselaer Flowood area, and you've got about 10,000 in the Richmond-Florence area. The Richmond-Florence area is going to routinely be in the 15 percent, if there's a 15 percent, because those two are averaged together, and, and from a business standpoint, it makes sense for them to make the timelines on 40,000.
Let me, and I'm with you 100 percent, because I'm in the same, we're on opposite ends, but the way I understand this, to protect you and me or our districts, that 15 percent is still going to be, even though we're in that 15 percent, and they could say all the time, we're still going to be held, they are going to be held at a timeframe that is acceptable by you and me. If it's not, we won't, I will not, I, I'll hold against it.
I don't, the timelines were 12 and 25, and then we just submitted 15 and 25, I think, or 20 or 25.
You know, where I live, or, or where Lake Harbor is, we know realistically that you cannot leave Brandon or Flowood even and get there in 12 to 15 minutes. So, I mean, it's going to be a little different, but I am sensitive about the 15 percent time. There's still going to be accountability.
The, the critical part to the whole thing, and again, we just hadn't read it yet, so I can't tell you what it says, but this is the specific, the actual specifics that we're going to polish in, and, and again, we just hadn't read it yet, so I don't know what it says, but.
Agreed.
The, the proper amount of attention, I promise you, will go to those details of it.
And we'll be glad to share it with you.
Yeah, share it with you.
I would like you, yeah.
With all due respect, based on the last several years, we're just very proceeding, very cautiously.
This is a different board, it's a different board.
Right, right.
And very thankful to you guys.
Brian, hang on.
I was just going to say that when we do get the contract, I'd like permission to be able to share that with our EMS board, you know.
You would like permission to what?
For the contract when it comes in, would we be able to share that publicly with our EMS board and, and get all the input?
I would hope so.
Yes.
I'd say yes.
I would love to have the input of, of the guys who've been speaking to their own peers.
Right, it's a representation.
From out of the fire chief group to, to put an eyeball on it, they've been right down the line with what we're trying to accomplish here.
The more, the more ayes are better on this thing, I mean.
Absolutely.
You, you've helped build it to this point, honestly, and we've used your all's input to, to get where we are, so no, I would encourage and want you to be a, a part of it, because you know the, the, the things in the fine print that we may not see.
The big deals for our, share, and, and I've been in several meetings with the guys, and I appreciate their input, the, the big, and, and they're more than what I'm just going to mention, but because there's been some discussion, I've had a chance to quickly scan through, so I want to address a couple of things that are now known because I've actually seen them. Number one, there is no 15 percent. They have to hit 90 percent on their timelines.
Yep.
Okay, so that's better than what we've had. For my chiefs that are in here, you know what I'm talking about. So they got. Transport, thoroughfare crossings blocked by trains, excessive response loads due to a mass casualty incident, and this one, I'm not so sure about, excessive ER wait times. I think that one got sneaked in, and that was not in the Brandon proposal, so we're going to have to talk about that one.
First year of wait time. And, and that's a problem throughout the entire area.
It is, it's system-wide.
Yep.
How you going to, how you going to address Highway 49 traffic, construction?
Everybody knows about that. That's their issue to address.
And, and they didn't list that as an exception.
No, sir.
That's not an exception.
Construction traffic is not an exception.
Hearing any of that, do any of you all have anything that you?
That, that's just a 30,000-foot view of two things that I know is important to you guys. There are a lot more things that need to be addressed beyond just those two big issues right there.
Well, everybody knows we're over a barrel here because we can't get an honest bid from somebody else. from somebody else, you know, because Patford is, could pull out of Pearl and Brandon, the additional units, but in the Brandon contract, it says, you know, certain, the criteria meets where they're full, they send them to the Crossgate, Bab, Crossgate Hospital, but they told us in our last discussion that if it's a heart attack, there was, they named off several things, but basically a life-threatening situation, that they would not be doing that, they would be taking them straight to Jackson, whichever hospital in Jackson that they need to go to.
Does it say anything about a time we need to respond to the contract?
That's my question. What kind of timeline are we looking at for, to get this done? If we, if we do. This was actually forwarded to me, so I didn't see the, the document that came with the proposal, so I'm gonna have to plug back in to Patford and see what that thought process is.
Keep Brian, Brian to keep you all updated, and if we, a window meeting, meeting everything.
I think they said the first of March is when they would, didn't they? I think they said first of March.
We're already past that date.
Oh, yeah.
First of April.
Is it April?
April five.
April five?
You guys, Patford is, has already reached, well, they are in the process of reaching an agreement with Madison, and so it, it behooves Patford to try to work with us as quickly as possible, because they can derive some economies of scale if they're, if they're ramping up two different county ALS responses, so they're definitely gonna want to move quickly, but we need to be in a position to take all the time we need, and that's the best we can for our citizens.
Did you say Pearl and Brandon were included in our contract?
No, sir.
No.
No, sir. They're, they're not gonna be signatories.
I thought, or, nor is Flowood from our understanding.
Rankin County will be, though.
But, trust me, we want your input, we're gonna, you will see it, and I wanna hear back from you on what you think, because y'all have been the, maybe, the backbone of where we're up to this point here, with what you, in the meetings that I've been, I've attended with you, so thank you.
They wanted three hundred thousand to start with for seven ambulances, and we got them down to zero by them being all-inclusive Rankin County, meaning that they get to all the transports. Of course, none of the cities or counties have control of that, so, you know, we're like, sure, you got it, but, you know, we can encourage it, all we want, and we definitely want that, because we don't want to pay three hundred thousand a year, but, but that was a, that, that was a, and also, they, they want a long-term contract, too, which tells me they feel good about the service they're gonna be of offers, so I hope it all works out. Does anybody else have anything they wanna add about this?
Y'all pretty much right where you know what we know, and that's what I wanted to make sure you knew that, so thank you all for coming.
Is there anything else? We have one executive session matter we do need to take up today, so I'd like a motion to discuss the need to, one executive session for personnel.
That's good.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that lady's at the toilet. They were on paper. Yeah, well, I was afraid. But they weren't wanting to talk, obviously, but, but no, they were back here going at it. They just got this desk, hey, let's get out of here.
I'm not shaking your hand, I'm mugging your neck.
How you been?
Got a hotel, little room.
Hey, man.
Sorry.
Okay, everybody get out.
Sounds good, I'll listen, all right. Here it goes.
Is that good, boys, actually, like that?
They still ain't moving.
Please clear the room so we can continue.
Yeah, throw them out, please.
Got it.
Hey, I don't know who that is.
Mike, no, you say it.
You do? Hey, Craig.
Let him, if he wants to come.
Hey, how you doing, man? How you doing, man? I know you come just like, watching.
My brother's come on, I didn't know he was going.
We're still recording, put your mic on.
Mic's off. Put your mic on.
It's still recording.
I know.
Okay.
I'm waiting, we gotta go in.
I'm right here, man. Craig, welcome back.
See, ran, tipped out, man.
You wanna go, go in? Okay, can I cut back on my mic now? Okay, okay, all right. Make sure, don't get in trouble. Okay, do we have a motion to go to executive session to discuss personnel?
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison, to go on executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. We are in executive session. No, I mean, he walked out, you know, whenever we interviewed that one guy.
He didn't wanna be on any of the.
No, no, just that one guy was all.
He missed both of them, he never came back.
I guess it's, all right, all right, um, do we have a motion coming out of executive session? Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Cross, all in favor, say aye.
So, we gonna contact them, we gonna contact them.
So, no action was taken in executive session, if somebody will be.
Present.
Not me, I don't even know him.
I will take care of the first applicant that if we're going to offer the job to, we're gonna offer the job to the road manager. I won't say his name, because he's gainfully employed with another company.
I don't think you gotta put that on record.
Well, that's what makes sure he's gonna pick.
What about the, what about the?
So, we may, we need to recess until the fifteenth.
I don't know, I'm trying to find it.
Fifteenth, no, we don't even say nothing on record. We do it on the fifteenth. We do it on the fifteenth.
Well, you gotta talk to them.
Well, you can do that, don't they live down the street from you?
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to my guy.
I don't have a problem, I'm trying to tell you, I'm trying to ask you something, though.
We have a motion to recess?
Motion to recess. For yours. Yeah.
Motion to recess.
I got a motion to recess by Mr. Gaines, to recess to the fifteenth, second by Mr. Morrow, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. Okay, man.